Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February 15th, 2023 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum today. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. And we've all had a chance to review those. Any additions or corrections? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our consent agenda. Again, everyone's had a chance to review this. Quite a few items on there today. Lots of work being done in the planning department. Any additions, corrections, or anything anybody would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we are moving on to the GDO portion of our agenda. Our first item today is Clary Park, a master plan amendment for 20 lots on 77.2 acres, zoned PUD, CH, GDO I and GDO II, located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Willow and Trail, and Robbie Corleau Road, formerly Clary Lane. Hans Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the developer. Good afternoon, Ms. Green. How are you?
Good afternoon. I'm well. I'm happy to be here. Thank you. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider an amendment to a master plan that you approved last year. The file number for the previous plan is 2021-403, and I just make note of that for Ms. Jacob's records when she's doing the minutes. The gateway requires a master plan for all development, and part of what that does is coordinate the infrastructure, shows who's responsible for the facilities such as sidewalks, irrigation, lighting, and those sort of elements, and to manage the number of access drives. As you know, one of the areas that we work very closely on Medical Center Parkway is coordinating the location of driveways, making sure that access is shared so that vehicles aren't required to exit into the road to go to an adjacent lot. And so, this, what you have before you is a master plan amendment to combine two lots, and I'll show you where those are. It's a little bit difficult to see. The Civil was able to highlight them for you, but to combine two lots, which alters the location of some of the easements. And so, this is merely an amendment to that master plan. We want to note that the original approval for that 2021 file had the details for the landscaping, the linear park, the elements prepared by Reagan Smith for this applicant, and those are still valid, and they're still working on those. This plan was not to change those. So, when we move forward, we'll also use the information in that original file. But this is a master plan amendment, just something that we asked them to do, as I mentioned, to coordinate the development in this area. Next, you'll have a final plat to consider combining the two lots here. The master plan is in good order, and staff would ask that you approve it, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding this master plan amendment?
There are none. I make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, Clary Park, Section 2 and Section 1, re-subdivision of lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, final plat for five lots on 8.3 acres, zoned CH and GDO I, located along Medical Center Parkway, Hans developer. Ms. Aguilera, good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, again, for the second item, a continuation of the Clary Park subdivision, final plat for the creation of lots 9 and 10, and to re-subdivide, to revise the property lines between 3 and 4, and consolidate lots 5 and 6. I have that attachment pulled up here. That shows the overall sheet and the new lots in question here, the re-subdivision of those lots. As Margaret Ann Green has stated, this is kind of with the master plan amendment, staff wanted to ensure that they were submitted simultaneously so we can ensure that all easements and other plat elements were recorded consistently, as there's a number of work being done here, and it covers a large number of, a large area. With that, we wanted to make sure that, again, that the property lines that were being re-subdivided and revised were being denoted correctly, as well as the access easement. Again, as Ms. Green stated, there's a number of infrastructure elements that are being coordinated in this area, so we wanted to make sure, again, that the master plan and final plat were being submitted simultaneously so we can have a good coordination of those elements. Staff did not find any major outstanding concerns with this final plat, and with that, I think staff, we believe that this plat is in good order, and staff recommends that any approval of this plat be made subject to all staff comments. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions regarding the final plat? We're ready for a motion.
This is my, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Item C is North Church Lot 17. It's an initial design review for 10,501 square foot restaurant on 2.7 acres, zoned MU and GDO I, located along Medical Center Parkway, Conference Center Boulevard, and Silo Hill Lane. Garcia's Properties LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Our last item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider initial design review for a property that's located in the North Church subdivision. It's Lot 17 in the North Church subdivision, and you can see that on the screen before you. This is essentially the hospitality campus that the city envisioned near the Embassy Suites. It does have frontage along three streets, three streets, Silo Hill Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and Conference Center Boulevard. You can see the site before you. If you've been on the Planning Commission for several years, the site probably looks familiar to you because Lot 17 had a plan that was approved on May 15th, 2019, and that plan was for a restaurant named Los Trojas, and it's a Mexican restaurant. And at that time, that, that was just for the Mexican restaurant. The owner of the property hadn't built the restaurant, and they want to go forward with a different model. So, in addition to the approvals nearly expiring or being expired, they want to change the plan here so they go to a 15,444 square foot building that has multiple tenants. The largest tenant would be for the Los Trojas restaurant, so the largest tenant is 9,000 square feet. But there's an additional 6,444 square feet of what they anticipate to be retail. The building's been designed with two suites. It could be one suite if one tenant wants to come in and take that entire space. It could not be a restaurant because the parking on the site could not support a restaurant, but there are other retail uses that may be a good fit there. And so, the plan is to change the building to a multi-tenant building. They were required to park the center individually, meaning with more parking, because the restaurant space exceeds 35 percent, so it's not considered a commercial center. And sometimes, when you review plans, commercial centers allow some shared parking, and this one had to individually park each use. In 2019, when the building was approved, there was a lot of discussion about the materials and the design. The original materials had some stones being exported from Texas in addition to other features, and we had a material board, but I'll go through what we have today. Also, in 2019, there was quite a bit of discussion about the area on the plan that is being called their formal open space. It's located near the entrance to the building, so here. And so, let me get to a different page. In that area, they're proposing a design that has the colored pavers, imported metal benches from Mexico, a horse statue, a carriage, and Mexican beach pebbles and a water feature as a part of that. And because the horse statue and the carriage drew a lot of attention in 2019, I wanted to bring it back up. And as, just to give you a reference, printed the page that's on the screen today, and then some examples of a Los Trojas, those elements and other buildings, and so, the paper handouts that you have have some Google Map images that I took if you needed some visual aids to see what that would look like. As far as the building design, if you tried to print this packet off, I think Ms. Jacob said there was a little trouble printing the package, so we've printed the color elevations and also laid them out on the desk. I think I can bring them on the screen without any problem here. So, as I mentioned, one of the opportunities with this site is that it has three fronts. In the gateway, you are required to have four-sided architecture, meaning similar treatment on all four sides, including the roof. But with this building, it actually has three fronts and then a rear property line, so the, one of the challenges was designing the building with those three streets and then, of course, the back. One of, one, some of the feedback that I gave the design team early on was I wanted it to be a cohesive design on the building. Initially, the Mexican restaurant side looked drastically different from the retail side, and so, they were able to take that feedback and make this building look like it's all, you know, multiple tenants, but have more of a cohesive look. The east elevation, which is the second one down, is the elevation that has large operable windows that roll up. There is no outdoor dining here, and I know that's a question we ask sometimes, but what they do have is the opportunity to roll up these large operable decorative windows and kind of give that feel to people dining on that side of the restaurant. And then, in the bottom image is where you can see the entrances for the multi-tenant. The architect is Jerry Pesky, Peschi. He's here. I'm going to invite him up to go through the details of the building. We do have a copy of the, a printout of the building, and I'm going to pass the material board around.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor of SEC. Got the architect, Mr. Peschi, here as well. The site itself is, I won't say it's exactly identical, but it's very similar to the original Los Trojas site. We just, we pushed and pulled around the building. Primarily, the access points stayed the same, and the parking, we just made it comply with the requirements. Mr. Peschi, you can walk through the building design itself. I think Margaret Ann did a good job touching on most of the high points.
So, as you'll see, the, the design of the building is, has a Mediterranean feel to it. According to the design guidelines, it's majority masonry, as Margaret Ann mentioned. The building has a distinct base and field and cap to the building that's required by the design guidelines. We have three different bricks on the building. One of the main issues to, to address on the design is to make sure that the design, that the building massing is broken down to where it gives a good feel, a human feel to the, to the building. There's no larger length of building, no, nothing greater than 40 feet without an offset or in the building or the change in materials. We have stone at the big elements you see on the, on the elevations, and then two different brick types in the field. I'm sorry, one in the field. The base is a, kind of a brown color, and then the cap is kind of a light color. The patio are outdoor seating. It's indoors during bad weather, and then we open all the windows, and it makes it feel like a patio for outdoor seating. And that area has a Mediterranean tile roof to give it some interest there. The parapets are tall enough to where they screen the rooftop units. All the mechanical units are on the roof, so the, the parapets are tall enough to where all those units are screened. You don't see those units from any right away. There's a dumpster area in the back that is screened also by Mason New Walls also.
I think it's red brick, but that's why I'm asking. So, looking at the east elevation, the red that's above the windows that can roll up, is that an awning, or is that brick?
That is a sloping roof that's over that area, and it has a clay tile roof on that, on that roof.
Okay.
So, it gives it a more Mediterranean look.
Okay.
There is a little bit of brick over the windows between that roof and the windows.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And we also have that same roof. If you look down at the north elevation, there's a small area of that same roof.
Okay.
We also have the owners here, Miguel Martinez and his, and William and his team. They've done a great job. They're really interested in being in this community. These guys have wonderful restaurants. The food is fabulous, so they're looking forward to this opportunity. They see their restaurant is not just a restaurant, but a place for the community to kind of gather, family, family eating, gathering, friends after church, things like that. So, they're looking forward to it.
Have you got any other questions or concerns regarding the architecture or anything to do with the initial design review?
One thing that we did ask Ms. Green, and she can speak to this certainly on her behalf, is if we could consider initial and final at the same time, since we'd basically seen the same site previously, it was still very consistent with the original approval and proposal there. The main change was the building architecture.
So, this has nothing to do with the design, but this is now becoming a multi-use versus just the restaurant?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm assuming the type of tenant would only be limited based upon what's limited in the guidelines of the gateway?
Yes, sir. So, we have parked the restaurant part as a restaurant based on the physical number of seats inside, and then the others, we have parked at one per 300, so that's going to allow most of your retail office users. That will have to be monitored, certainly, whenever somebody comes to pull a building permit. No other food users could go in there unless we started removing seats from our restaurant, and I'm sure my clients would not want to do that, so.
I was kind of leaning towards more of what, what would be going in here, not so much parking.
Well, as far as what kind?
Yeah.
I don't know that we have any current prospects. Just, we're thinking retail environment.
And it could be three tenants in that.
It could be. We've got a total of about just over 6,000 square feet, and so, most of your retail tenants are, you know, in that 2,000 square foot range.
I guess where I'm going with this is I would have the same height and thought process. This is a great lot. There's just absolutely no question about it. They're going to do well just because of the, where they are. We, the, I guess it's one or two lots up where we had this gas station and multi-use tenant. We, we really put them through probably more than what they wanted to go through with respects to signage and the use. And I just, I want us to be careful here because this is, this is, again, close to the entrance of Medical Center Parkway coming in off the interstate and coming into Murfreesboro, so.
Yeah, could we match that same?
I'd love to.
I think that's the right thing to do, to match it.
Yeah, match it. And I think we matched it across the street at the Park on Clary Park, too.
So, I, I would have to go back and get those restrictive covenant. I think what we did was lay some restrictive covenants on that property. Now, that particular one, I know we were concerned because it was a, a gas station and liquor store, I think were the distinct elements there. I could certainly go back and find those recorded documents and share those back with my client, see what he can do there. So, I could certainly do that.
Finage issues with the two that were restricted on signage.
You could certainly have a request for that type of tenant here as well, so.
They could, but we could do that on any of these strip centers, you know, up and down this corridor, but I could certainly go back and find those. I've not shared those with my client, hadn't had a reason to, but I could certainly go back and find them and share them with my client. I don't remember what all was inside of those necessarily.
I can tell you what was in them. I think a lot of the language was regarding signage specifically, and at the time, we thought GDO III and GDO I had different sign restrictions, but they're really mostly just the same. And so, what was different there was that the buildings had to comply with the private restrictive covenants that are recorded on the properties located in GDO, so the DRC, what they reviewed, their sign standards are different, but GDO I, GDO III isn't a difference. So, I think signage was the question, window signs were the question in addition to use, and it was the DRC restrictions on signage that were applied to the property.
I, so, I love the look of the building, and I think it would do well. I just, I mean, if we can work through that, Matt, that would be great.
I agree. I'll, I'll get those downloaded and sent to my client, make sure he doesn't have any objection to it. I don't think they're overly burdensome. I think they have more to do with not blocking windows and things like that, so I'm sure my client wants a first-class look.
Right.
So, I'll share those with him so he can educate himself a little bit.
Thank you.
So, would that be something, then, Ms. Green or Matt, do we need to just do initial design review right now and then allow them to look at those and then come back at final design to confirm those items, the restrictions?
Traditionally, that's the way we would manage, manage the process. And I think, I understand why the owner would want to review them before saying something today regarding that, and probably they.
Yes.
I think they'd appreciate. They are actually interested in maybe if you would consider initial and final design today. I didn't say you would. I wanted to see how your conversations went, but they would put the restrictions on the property, the same restrictions that are on Lot 19, which is actually adjacent to this property. So, this is the lot that you were talking about, and this is the lot we're talking about.
Aye.
So, but you probably want not me confirming it, but Mr. Taylor, the representative, to confirm it.
Sure. We'll get those put on there. Did we do that prior to building permit or prior to C vote? I don't remember, but we'll get those applied. I'll, I'll get those downloaded. We drafted them once, so it should be pretty quick.
Awesome. I'm good. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments, including the same deed restrictions or covenants that were applicable across the street.
An initial and final?
An initial and final.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second for initial and final design review, subject to all, all he said. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we are moving on to plats and plans. Our first item is Bingham-Hahn Artisan Brewery, site plan for a 2,800 square foot artisan brewery zoned CH, located at 2476 Old Fort Parkway, Bingham-Hahn LLC developer. Ms. Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very exciting item to be discussing today because, as we talked about last month, now that with the revised ordinance for breweries, distilleries, and wineries, we're starting to see a lot more interest in the city. So, last month, we considered an artisan distillery, but this is the first artisan brewery brought to you today from Brandon Bingham. He is also in the audience, should you have any questions later. But this is a site plan review as required by the ordinance. Every brewery, any types of applications for this is required to come before the Planning Commission, and so, this is a site plan review for the proposed artisan brewery at 2476 Old Fort Parkway. I brought up the design and kind of the concept design of what will be going into that tenant space. There are other attachments that I'll kind of reference and that we can look at together, but just kind of wanted to first bring up this space as to what is envisioned for that. The property is zoned commercial highway, and it is a permitted use in that zone. The proposed artisan brewery would be in an existing shopping center where there are several service retail and restaurant tenants in the building currently. Per the applicant's calculations, the shopping center currently has a total of 160 available parking spaces, including six ADA spaces. The proposed artisan brewery would occupy the middle tenant space, and I'm going to show you that real quick here. It would occupy the middle tenant space. I think it'd probably just be better just to go over here. This middle tenant space where the old A-Harts Pizza Garden space used to be. And so, and they're going to be utilizing this delivery portion, this delivery section here along the western side of the building for their accessory activities as well. You know, as I, as I've stated before, this is, you know, part of the new regulations that have come in, so I'm just going to read the definition for artisan brewery so we can get acquainted of what it is again. An artisan brewery is defined as a small commercial use brewery that manufactures no more than 600 gallons of finished product containing spirituous liquors or alcohol per month. There was a typo in my staff report. I put 5,000, I believe. That was actually a misreading from the artisan distillery, so I apologize. They're not allowed to exceed no more than 600 gallons of finished product. The total floor area used for distilling, including bottling and barreling, shall not exceed 3,000 square feet, and any accessory activities that include those listed in Chart 1, Chart 1 N-029 shall adhere to the provisions of the zoning ordinance. If we had to discuss that further, we can go over that again, and the applicant can go further again to discuss what accessory activities will be in that. But per the attached correspondence from the applicant, the proposed artisan brewery will occupy that tenant space, which is around 2,800 square feet of tenant space. Of the 2,800 square feet, approximately 800 will be used for those brewing activities. So, Mr. Bingham and his proposed artisan brewery will be in compliance of that 3,000, minimum, a maximum of 3,000 square feet. The applicant has stated in the correspondence that beer will be served onsite and plans for a small distribution of beer to local bars and restaurants in a volume that is appropriate with a small delivery van. There, again, there is access along that western side of the portion of the building that is behind, that existing shopping center that he will utilize, but does not plan to have, you know, the more large distribution network that we would see probably with a more traditional brewery, winery, or distillery. Again, because there was, there would be separate provisions for that as well. There will be no actual packaging, bottling, and canning planned for this space, and the applicant has projected that the total volume produced from the brewing will be less than 200 barrels in year one and around 400 to 600 minimum beer barrels in year two. The applicant is aware, again, of that maximum 600 beer barrels in that production, and they anticipate, they have anticipated that they will not be exceeding that with this space. The intention for this space, and I'll go back to it so we can just see it again, is for a minimum build-out. They really wanted to, again, have something for a community hub and something that can just, again, have that minimum build-out to what A-Harts Pizza Garden had. So, with the applicant being aware of all these standards and consultation with our legal department of the standards for this site plan, staff believes that the proposed use complies with the definition of standards for artisan brewery and recommends that the Planning Commission approve this, subject to all staff comments. Again, I am here, should you have any questions, and Mr. Brandon Bingham is here in the audience as well, if you have any questions.
So, I got one. I don't remember all the provisions of what we passed, but, so, the storage of barrels, are they required to store these in the interior? What I don't want to see is that you got this truck that's going to be picking up barrels, and then there's barrels that just sit on back of a loading deck that's there.
Yeah, those are required, yeah. Those are required to be in an enclosed structure, and they can't, you know, there are provisions for that as well.
Okay.
It can't be within, you know, this many feet, I think it's like 200 or 300 feet of a residentially zoned property or something along the lines of that. And, but with this proposed use, I don't actually think that there will be actual barrels located in that. Again, I think there's a small distribution plan for that, but I don't think that is anticipated with that, but Mr. Bingham can clarify that of what will be physically at this address.
Mr. Bingham, you would like to come to the podium?
So, there's a lot of, I think, numbers that are getting thrown around that can be a little confusing. It's just the 600 barrels, barrel is just a unit of measurement. It's 31 gallons, and that's how the federal government taxes us, and that's also how we do it at the state level. But, yeah, in terms of kegs or, you know, things being stored outside, yeah, I think obviously no problem to follow the, the regulations there and, you know, keep it inside. I think it's kind of, it's kind of junky when you see that stuff, you know, behind a restaurant. a restaurant or anywhere, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Bingham, is there any outdoor space here, or is it all interior?
There is. So if you look, yeah. Oh, yeah. Sure, so the kind of semicircle triangle area there on the right, that's sort of in the catty corner backside of the commercial center. And so you can only access that from inside the restaurant space.
It was an existing patio at A-Harts, and he's going to be reusing it.
Okay. Very good. Perfect.
And there's no, no permanent covering out there. It's shade sales and, you know, patio umbrellas only. I know that does impact parking and restroom restrictions, but it's nothing permanently covered, so.
That'll be a good spot.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope so.
Any other questions?
If there are another questions, I move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the MMC Las Cassas preliminary plat for four lots on 11.1 acres, zoned CF, located along Las Cassas Pike and East Pitts Lane. Las Cassas Pike Properties LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This particular project, you may recall, a couple months back, we annexed and re-zoned this particular piece of property to CF. And when you saw it back then, it had three legal lots of record that are shown here on the aerial that front onto Las Cassas Pike and East Pitts Lane. They have submitted a site plan review as well as a preliminary plat, and we're bringing the preliminary plat to you today as we're required to process or bring it to you within 30 days of submittal. So it does have some comments to it that are tied to the site plan, which you should see probably in the next month. But what they're looking at here is providing access through the center section and creating a flag lot back to the MMC site, and then a access that drops down to East Pitts Lane as well with this back portion. So you're creating four lots. So here's your first one, second one, third, and then this fourth remainder has the site for the commercial MMC building as well as drainage and the main access point. With this particular submittal, there's a 1.59 acre lot, a 2.05 acre lot, those would both be on Las Cassas, and we've required in the staff comments that those be accessed off of that main driveway that's coming into the MMC building, not directly accessed from Las Cassas. Lot three, which is the one on East Pitts, is 2.05 acres. And then Lot four, the main one, is 5.88 acres. With those particular comments that are listed in the attachment, staff recommends the approval of the final preliminary plat, excuse me, subject to all staff comments. And you'll notice at the bottom there, we're asking that staff be allowed to implement minor modifications that may come off of that processing of their site plan review for their project. And with that, I believe we might have representation from MMC, should you have any questions.
What's the status of East Pitts Lane, and when does that come into play?
So East Pitts Lane is all in the county, and so one of the requirements that we're looking at with their site plan is improvements along, you know, a portion of East Pitts Lane with their project, and to actually construct that accessway that ties between East Pitts and Las Cassas. If you've driven down East Pitts, it's about 15 feet, 12 feet of pavement in some areas, but in the front portion up here, the church property has asphalt that comes all the way to the street, so that gives a little bit more room in that particular segment. So we would look at these improvements, but because they are located in the county, those will require county permits. And so one of the staff comments I believe we have is requiring that we get those approvals prior to the construction start on this particular piece of property so that we make sure that as people are entering or exiting this particular point, there's enough roadway in place, but it would stay in the county. And then on Las Cassas Pike, they're required to put left turn pockets coming into the site and out of the site.
And so that would be required for any construction on Lots Three or Four?
Correct. Correct. Because it's really an entirety. It functions together. We did not want to see just a single independent access point coming off of East Pitts. We'd probably want to discourage that. So the main entry point coming off of Las Cassas, the idea is, is that will be the heavily-used drive entrance for all four of the parcels.
So are we saying these improvements will be made before?
They'll have to get their, they'll have to get their permits before we issue building permits, is my understanding from talking to Katie and our engineers.
So it would be vertical construction then, as to when this would have to happen, right?
Yes.
I believe I wrote the comment as any permit, so they would need to get their approvals from the county for that access point prior to land disturbance permit.
Okay.
That we don't want to have them starting construction and the county deny access for whatever reason. So we want to make sure the plan works before we give them any permits to start construction.
Thank you.
And, but then, so they'll get permits from the city to start construction if they have a permit from the county?
Correct.
For the roadway?
Yes. I believe when this was going through annexation, that I think we might have been told there wasn't going to be access off of East Pitts, maybe? Does that sound, no? Okay. Or, but with the condition, and the county has to approve that, it's not public right-of-way, we just want to make sure the county's on board before we give them approval to start work.
Okay. A little clarification there, something you thought you might want?
Tina and Gerald with Hollis and Steel Engineering. Also have Mr. Joey P., Denise, and Joey Ryan with me, representing MMC. When Lot Three develops, I mean, we'll be constructing that access and working on that, but we have access off of Las Cassas, and we would like not to tie the county approval to us starting construction. I mean, you know, we've got access off Las Cassas, or we'll, once we get T-DOT approval, we have to have that first. But we'd like to get started on this construction side and get started on Lot Four, which we're developing, and let that approval come with, down the road with Lot Three. We don't want to, you know, hinder us starting construction waiting on a county, you know, roadway permit. We could get approval off of Las Cassas Pike with T-DOT and get started. It's what we would like to see the approval, allow us to do that.
And then I would think we would block access to East Pitts Lane and not allow ingress and egress on East Pitts.
Yeah, that's fine with us. You know, we can, we can operate off of the main drive. We don't really need the access to East Pitts. You know, that secondary access can be done when Lot Three develops, and we're fine with just one access off of Las Cassas. That's where our traffic analysis looked at, just the one access. Actually, we'd get better if you go to East Pitts, but all of our traffic analysis is based off just one entrance, not even counting the East Pitts access today. So we would like for that approval to be just the access off of Las Cassas Pike, you know, and not ties to a county approval on East Pitts in the future day. We'd like to go and get started sooner than that.
So I would like to mention our subdivision regs require that they have frontage on public right-of-way. And so, for example, their entrance here that accesses that back portion is required to be a minimum of 50 feet. So if this lot down here wanted to not be connected to East Pitts, it would also need to have at least 50 feet of frontage and would have to be redesigned to be able to accommodate that if we were not accessing, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Matthew, I don't know if they were getting no access from East Pitts, whether that would affect their, or would they, their frontage just be what touches down regardless of if it has access?
Yeah. Lot Three appears to have, to meet minimum frontage requirements on East Pitts Lane. I would also mention, you know, we always strive to have multiple ways in and out of a development. And in my opinion, one of the reasons why it is a good idea to, and I don't know that we were necessarily prepared to discuss this, because it's more of a site plan issue, I think. It's something that we've been discussing with them with the site plan, and their site plan is not on today's agenda. They submitted that, but we didn't feel it was in a condition to put on the agenda for your consideration yet. The access point onto Pitts Lane enables that second way in and out of the development. And the viability of Lot Three as an out parcel with only frontage on East Pitts Lane, you know, I don't, I don't know when Lot Three will actually ever develop, and so if we delay that connection until Lot Three, that might just be delaying that connection indefinitely. I think Ms. Noel has some additional thoughts on the matter.
I, did this site plan show access to East Pitts as a part of?
On our master plan, we're showing access, and we're fine with getting, you know, something the county's taking that in the future, we can, we can get access to East Pitts. But, and we want that secondary access in the future, but we don't need it now for development of the MMC lot. And on our master plan, we have that shown in preliminary plat, we have those easements to provide that. With this plat, we're going to have an easement over to East Pitts. So we can work with the county and get, you know, some kind of letter or something saying that we could have access to East Pitts in the future. But our intention is to just develop the main access into the site from Las Cassas today with Lot Four. And we, I mean, that's, that's what, you know, all we need is the one access, that's what the traffic analysis studied. And I can work with the county, I haven't talked to Greg Brooks through the county, but we can work with them and get a letter or some kind of approval that we can access it in the future. This driveway can be approved, I don't mind doing that, but I just don't want to tie that connection to development of this site. I want, we don't want to get started sooner than that.
I'm Joey Ryan with Dow Smith Contracting. I'm the design builder representing MMC. I think Matthew makes a good point. We're just talking about the plat today. We plan and have good intentions to work out the access road and the timing of that with staff at the time of the site plan approval. So any did stay correctly, we show the access easement off Las Cassas, we show the access easement off East Pitts Lane, that will have to happen. Right now, we're just not quite in alignment as far as when that does happen. We feel like we don't need it now, but we will seek all the approvals necessary at the time that that lot is developed, or when, or when we can align with staff on what the timing is. But I think we're in alignment with the staff on the access road easements are there, and that will have to be done sometime in the future.
So are we saying, for example, Matthew, that if this lot, if this was just Lots One, Two, and Four, and it went straight back and we didn't have this Lot Three or this access to East Pitts, we would approve development of this flag lot back to Lot, what's now Lot Four, with just the one entrance on and off of Las Cassas, and that would have worked just fine?
Well, I don't, I don't know if it would have worked just fine, but it, but they, you know, the Lot Four, as it's being shown now, has frontage on, on East Pitts Lane. It's just part of their detention pond, which is being housed on that same lot with the MMC facility. The property that they requested for annexation and zoning has frontage on East Pitts Lane, which means it has frontage on a second public street, which is an opportunity for additional access into the property.
Now, there's an access easement over a drainage easement.
The access easement, I believe, goes to the side of the, of the detention area.
And there's enough room there for?
Yeah, I'll zoom in.
Okay.
So I don't know if the, if the cable department could bring up my computer. When they're not televising meetings, they don't monitor what we're saying as closely as usual, but we appreciate them as always.
The access easement from Lot Four is through Lot Three, and, you know, we have 30-foot ingress egress seats with that, and we've got about 130, 40 feet of detention, which is on Lot Four.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's what I was saying, you'll notice the, here is the frontage of Lot Four along East Pitts Lane, and the 30-foot ingress egress easement runs through the very western portion of Lot Three down to East Pitts Lane. And I think that the timing of the construction of that, as Mr. Ryan said, is something that we can continue to have dialogue with the applicants on. It's something that I think we desire to be, to be constructed on the front end with the MMC development to provide that second means of ingress and egress into their site, especially for emergency purposes. But I think that that is, that is something that, that was kind of an issue that goes along with the site plan, not necessarily the preliminary plat. I think the preliminary plat shows a place for it, and the timing of that is something that we can continue to work, work on during the, our discussions with the applicants on the, on the site plan review.
So are you saying that we could approve the plat today, and by the time the site plan comes to us, again, you guys will have this worked out?
We will, we will attempt to have it worked out. But, but yeah, I think the preliminary plat approval is not dependent upon that issue being resolved at this time.
So move subject all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all. Appreciate it so much. Okay. Next, we have Oakland High School site plan for 102,000-square-foot building addition at an existing public school on 71.7 acres, zoned RS-15, located along Patriot Drive. Rutherford County Board of Education is the developer. Ms. Aguilera.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. This item that we're presenting is an addition for Oakland High School site plan review. The place for Oakland High School proposed a 102,000-square-foot building addition that will connect from the rear of the existing main building to the new annexed building. The addition will be two stories and utilizes similar building materials and theme pattern that will match the existing buildings. The proposed addition will create an addition, 25 additional classrooms, as well as spaces for science lab and a new auditorium. Additionally, there will be modifications to the parking lot in front of the school on Patriot Drive, including a new configuration to the entrances and a new emergency access drive. Proposed addition will remove several parking spaces with the proposed addition, but will still be compliant with the minimum parking standards in Chart Four, the zoning ordinance, so they have, will continue to exceed that. In addition, on the Oakland High School property, there are several portable buildings that are existing today that are used for that classroom space to accommodate that student population. During the Board of Zoning Appeals, through their special use permit process, that, that has been discussed and brought up. And so as a condition of approval for that special use permit, the portables will be removed off the property by August 20, August 1st of 2026. They're anticipating that this classroom, this addition can accommodate that, that space for that. So going through this, the site elements, first just wanted to touch, touch on first the landscaping. As you can see on the site plan that was included, there is a number of landscaping elements that have been included, as well as some screening elements. As shown on the plan, a stormwater detention pond is going to be proposed here, and with that, we've, staff requested that the applicant further, further screen, provide some additional landscaping per Section 27 of the zoning ordinance, just to, again, shield that from public views. And in terms of the building and architecture, again, as I mentioned, the applicant has proposed the new building addition to reflect and match currently what's existing there, so we're using, we're seeing a usage of brick and other types of materials like that. And then, of course, the same color, kind of, the- And then, of course, the same color, kind of the color pattern that will be used. They, again, the, of the entire, entire existing square footage and of the building, there's a total of 298 square feet, square footage for this, and the proposed two-story addition, again, will be 102,000 square feet, which will amount to a total of 400,000 square feet. So this is a pretty sizable addition, but of course, hoping to add more classroom space and science labs and a new auditorium for that. The addition, the addition will include a new catwalk. I'm going to, you can see here, that will, that was installed for vehicular access and, you know, circulation. This is something early on, an element early on that staff and the applicant discussed on, so that we can understand and make sure that this is going to be meeting city ordinances. We asked them to include the dimensions for it because we wanted to consult with the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department to ensure that it was exceeding, meeting that 13 feet maximum, minimum clearance height, height clearance for that. And so they are going to be going to 14 by 34 feet in height and width. So they are going to be exceeding Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department's requirements for that. And as stated for this, with this pattern, again, it's going to be matching the school. And even though the addition is very, very sizable, it's still going to be something that is going to be tucked away between the existing building and between the annex. It's about 300 or so, 300 feet away from the property line, so it will be in, located in the main campus of the building on the site. In terms of access and parking, for onsite parking, Chart 4 of the zoning ordinance, schools, public or private grades 10 through 12 requires five space for each classroom or one for each five seats in the school's auditorium, auditorium, whichever is greater. The site is required to provide at least a total of 500 parking spaces. After this new building addition, they're proposing 1,035 parking spaces, again, which exceeds that. This addition will be removing, be removing 89 parking, but, parking spaces, but they'll be adding back 293. So again, they're going to be exceeding that minimum requirement. The proposed site plan that was submitted to staff depicts a new access configuration that is along Patriot Drive. The plans show a new emergency access gate to operate on Yelp mode. That is located here. You can see this kind of configuration going right there along Patriot. And then as, as well as one new way, one-way entrance from Patriot Drive, a one-way exit onto Patriot Drive, and a two-way entrance and exit off Patriot Drive. During staff review, there was a lot of discussion about circulation and access. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we were going to be able to meet the accommodations of student population in school operations. So a meeting was held on February 8th to discuss these potential opportunities, to see how we handle that, and the cooperation between staff and the applicant was very constructive. We had a really good meeting that discussed a lot of the modifications that could be proposed to help with that circulation and, again, the access onto the site. And so the following modifications were discussed and agreed upon, and those are stated in my staff report I'm about to read. I'm going to read all five of them off. The first recommendation was that a pedestrian sidewalk connection from the existing main building extending out to Oakland Drive and connecting to a sidewalk on Genai Lane. So it's going to be coming from this way, I believe from, I'm sorry, I think it was going to be coming out here into this type of configuration. And if any of this is a little bit misconstrued, the applicant is here, Mr. Trey Lee and Roy Cooper, so they can elaborate on that further. So that was one modification that was recommended. A new pedestrian sidewalk connection from the existing main building going out south to Patriot Drive, again, so that new pedestrian connection going out to Patriot Drive. A new pedestrian sidewalk parallel to Patriot Drive on the school side property, connected to the new pedestrian sidewalk that will connect to the existing main building. So where that one sidewalk was coming down from the main building, we're going to see another pedestrian sidewalk connection that will hook up with that on the school side property. And the remove, the fourth modification that we, that was recommended was remove the proposed driveway on Patriot Drive and instead modify the existing entrance for it to be wider to accommodate a more queuing of cars. As you can see here, there's a, that modification that we were discussing during staff's review of the plans, they, we wanted to make sure that there was a good queuing of the cars. We wanted to see that that modification was going to be helping with their circulation. And so staff agreed between the design team and our staff that rather than adding that new drive-in, widening it would be beneficial to that circulation, the queuing of the cars. So that was something that was agreed upon as well. And then finally, the last, the fifth modification that was recommended was a new right turn lane onto Patriot Drive. And so again, staff had a really good conversation and constructive meeting to see how we could implement these opportunities and agree that this would be beneficial, again, for the onsite circulation and queuing of cars. So from that meeting, and the commitments made for Oakland High School, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the site plan, application subject to the staff comments, and the above-mentioned commitments from the applicant. Again, if you have any questions about what was discussed from those recommendations to the site, Trey Lee and Roy Cooper are here as well from the design team if you want to discuss that, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay. A lot to look at.
Yeah.
Big project.
If there are no questions, I make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I believe we have a very similar Item D. Riverdale High School site plan for 102,000 square foot building addition at an existing public school on 80 acres, zoned RS15, located along Warrior Drive. Rutherford County Board of Education is the developer. Ms. Rush, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Aguilera did such a good job, it's, it's hard to really add anything to it. The two schools, Riverdale and Oakland High School, are basically sister schools for building, site layout, access, parking, so it is very similar. See if I can get this to go to...
Sister schools that don't like each other? Oh, scary. More like brothers, brother schools.
Let's all be honest, one's better than the other.
My marriage is made up of Oakland and Riverdale.
If we could just clarify, the motion on the, on the previous application, when it was subject to staff comments, it included the additional five conditions and commitments that were agreed, agreed upon. Is that correct?
Correct. And that Oakland was better than Riverdale.
Yeah, that Oakland. I'd second that, too.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
As indicated in the, in the description, this is for 102,000 square foot building addition. That's basically going to be constructed on the backside of the main building, connecting the main building to the existing annex building. It will be two stories. It will have a vehicle underpass, which will include then a student crosswalk or catwalk, as they called it, to allow the students to go from the main building to the annex building. This was one of their components that was really felt to be necessary because the students now, in, during inclement weather, will have to wait until the weather calms down, oftentimes delaying their classes for them to get to their other class. So providing this covered and enclosed walkway was an important piece for the school district. On January 25th, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a special use permit, subject to conditions of approval. Those conditions are implemented in the site plan. And so we came forward then with the site plan proposal. So in addition to the, the building, there is a reconfiguration of the parking lot and access. As Mr. Aguilera had indicated, they have onsite existing parking that exceeds the minimum necessary per our zoning ordinance with the building addition. But with the configuration, there's also an addition of parking spaces. It will result in a total of, I think I have it on my last page, 1,034 parking spaces. The minimum that was, would be required with the new classrooms is 580, so it's, it's nearly double what is, what is needed. As discussed, some of the things that were really important were to provide as much queuing space onsite. As we all know, that this gets really congested in, on these, on these roads on Warrior. And by having this new driveway access was great, but felt that we can add additional cars in the queuing lane along this segment if we eliminated this and widen this one here. So by having this wider, it does provide for more onsite queuing and still provides good access into the site. As Joel had indicated, we, they're also proposing an emergency access road that will get to the rear of the property. In the rear of the property is all the athletic fields, football, baseball, and if there is an emergency that does come up, it is important to be able to get our emergency vehicles back to those areas. The other thing that had changed since this, where does it go? There it goes. Since this version was presented in the agenda, the school district has agreed to make that change to the driveway. They've also proposed an additional pedestrian walkway from the annex building to the, to Warrior Drive. I'm not sure if I know exactly where it's at. I think it's there, something in that general vicinity. They've also proposed to add sidewalks along Warrior Drive on this side of the street from this driveway to their southeast property line. What they're finding is that most of the students, they no longer really have walkers that are from the north end of the property. They're primarily walkers that leave the school and go to the housing that's to the south end. And so that, felt that that addition of that sidewalk will provide a good safety component for the students there. I don't really have anything else new to share. I'm happy to answer any questions of the commission. Likewise, the applicant is here to elaborate on anything if you have any questions of them. Staff is recommending, subject to the conditions of approval and comments that are, subject to the comments that were provided in the staff report, as well as the additional things that the school district had indicated they were providing, the pedestrian walkway combining the driveway and the sidewalk. Those were those three. Thank you very much.
I have a traffic flow question. Riverdale's drive-through in front of the school is backwards compared to Oakland's, how you drive off Warrior Drive to the main part of campus. Riverdale's empties towards the annex and Oakland's empties away from the annex, is that being something with traffic pattern with all this improvements?
We adjusted that this year.
Okay.
We widened both campuses to allow for two-way traffic in front of the school.
Okay.
So they're now both in and out on either side.
Yeah.
We've actually moved the parking back in that front parking area and added about 18 feet because we were having trouble, and we did that over the summer.
Yeah.
And if you can just state your name and address for the background.
I'm sorry. I'm Trey Lee, the Assistant Superintendent for Engineering and Construction for Rutherford County. So, but we, we did address that.
Okay.
And we're, agree that widening that center entrance for the new parking will, we hope, will help both schools as well.
All right, awesome. With that, if there's no other questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the addition of the...
The three, the three items in Ms. Rush's...
Additional, three, three additional commands. Yes, that, too. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Rush. And thank you all for all this exciting stuff for both high schools.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, just before they leave, I just wanted to compliment Ms. Rush and Mr. Aguilera, who looks like he has left. They worked very hard on this, on this...
Y'all worked him hard today.
On these two applications. And I'd like to compliment Mr. Lee and his design team over here, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Hooper, and their team, because I think this was a great example of working together. We were able to sit down, express our concerns to them, and they expressed their, their concerns back to us, and we were able to hammer out a solution. It was a great example of teamwork by our staff and by, by the applicants as well. We appreciate working with them.
Great. Thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
I just want to make sure I talk. I'm an ABC.
In vain.
Uh-huh. Okay. Our next item is 420 West Main Street. It's site plan for fencing modifications and the addition of two electronic gates to an existing site plan approval for a motor vehicle sales facility with a 3,000 square foot building on 1.04 acres, zoned CH and CCO, located at 420 West Main Street. Shay Sepavandi had a developer. Close. Ms. Kerr.
Glad it's you, not me.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission. This is a site plan review for a modification of approved site plan from 2021 for an existing motor vehicle sales facility. The plan is to modify approved fence plan that is including fencing, additional fencing, and two electronic Yelp-operated security gates on approximately 1.48. The applicant wanted to add the security gates for security purposes on the property. This is the site plan. They will be putting security gates along the rear of the property. I can figure out how they do this.
Are you wanting to clear it?
I'm trying. It says clear, but it's not clear. At the entrance off of West College and the entrance on West Main. They, originally, the applicant wanted to put security fencing all the way around the property. However, on this left-hand property line, left-hand, that's the west property line, that is a FEMA floodway, and you are not allowed to put fencing in a FEMA floodway. So they will not be allowed to put fencing in that particular area, but the rest of the fencing, the rest of the property will be fenced. So the staff recommends approval of this site plan, made subject to all staff comments, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
And this is per state law. This is, anytime someone gates their property from the public right-of-way, state law does require Planning Commission approval of such a site plan. So that's why this is before you today.
But staff approves and doesn't have any issues or problems.
Come in.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
If not, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Kerr. All right. Next, we have new business, and this could be a first for me. I've been here a long time, Matthew.
We...
It's kind of scary.
It is, it is. But rest assured, we will have more new business for you at next, next month's day meeting. We, we had our supplemental deadline last week, and we got several annexation and zoning requests, so, so don't fear.
Okay. So do we have a meeting on March 1st or whatever the date is?
So that, that brings me to my item of staff reports and other business.
Staff reports and other business. Okay. All right.
So I'm sure, just as a reminder, you, you've all been notified by Ms. Davis and the Administration Department that we'll be having our joint Planning Commission-City Council workshop meeting at the airport on March the 1st at 3:00. And the subject of that meeting will be the, the Future Land Use Map update and the text to Chapter 4, the Comprehensive Plan Update, similar to the workshop that the Planning Commission had, and it was just the Planning Commission. This will be a, a meeting that will be similar to that meeting, but it will be between both the Planning Commission and the City Council to have an opportunity to look at all those maps and discuss the, the proposed Future Land Use Map update. And so if we had gotten in items for public hearings on the, for March 1st, we would have two meetings that day, one in the afternoon at the airport and one in the evening back here. But since we don't have any public hearings to schedule, and there's no other business that can't wait until the next day meeting, we are going to be canceling the evening meeting on March the 1st, so that y'all will only have one meeting that day instead of two.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. We like that. All right. So do we need a motion for that?
You know, motions never hurt if, if you'd like to. A motion to cancel the, the March 1st... A motion to cancel the March 1st, 6:00 PM Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
We had a second. Yes.
We already had a second.
All right. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All right. I know there's no opposed.
I love how on the notes, it's going to read Chase Alice, motion to not have a planning commission.
Is there any other business to discuss today?
No, ma'am. I could give Mr. Ives a call if you'd like.
All right. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.